I'd like to call the April 5, 2022, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge. Before we begin our meeting this evening, I wanted to acknowledge the passing of a very significant person, a public servant in our community this past week. Max Queen passed away. Max has served our community in a variety of ways over many, many years in Buncombe County, working at Asheville-Buncombe Community Technical College, helping to train people in public safety and rescue services. He has also been elected to the Buncombe County School Board, and he's also served as a volunteer in the Inca Candler Fire District for many, many years, as well as many other ways in our community. And all who knew him were blessed by his kindness and being one of the most thoughtful and caring people that you could ever hope to meet. So I just wanted to acknowledge Max's passing and to say that we in the county are all thinking about him and his family and to ask for a moment of silence to reflect on and appreciate the life of Max Queen in our community. Thank you. I want to read the Ethics Reminder to the Board. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at our meeting this evening." Commissioners, we come to the Consent Agenda. Are there any questions about any items on the Consent Agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items on the Consent Agenda? Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published? So moved?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we come to Public Comment. We've had a number of folks sign up to speak to the Board during Public Comment. The time limit for individual comment is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any questions along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to speak during the Public Comment period. This is the public's chance to address the Board. The first person who signed up is Don Yeldon. And there'll be an orange light when you've got 30 seconds left and a red light when your time's up. We do ask folks to discontinue their public address when your time's up because we want to give everyone the same amount of time.
Well, standing here, I don't know which way to go. But first off, I'm going to say that A.J. Fox, a candidate for sure, has just passed away too. And I tell you what, it takes a lot of dedication to run for office, especially in Buncombe County, when you've got WLOS and the ACT working against you. I know, and you will see it this election season, folks. But I got a questionnaire in the mail, and it bothered me. And I think it should bother you. It's from the Asheville-Buncombe Food Policy Council. Says, "2022 Buncombe County Commissioner Candidate Survey." The original word around in offices and places was this was for city council. But what got me, which I looked at the first question because I always try to answer everything, I think this one I'm not. I'm going to treat it like a school board member treated something that was given to him. I'm going to file it in '13. "If the Joint Reparations Committee identifies food security as a priority for inclusion among the recommendations, how do you envision local government supporting the implementation of those recommendations?" If that question is not worded to make food a racist issue, then I'm not standing in front of you. It's there, everybody will see it. And it goes back to the fourth question, and the fourth question circles right back around and said, "If this is decided, will you put this in your 20-year plan?" So I think I gave a suggestion when I was being interviewed for Land Preservation Committee on how to provide security and safety for food and security and safety down the road. That is, you don't tax people on vacant land as if it was developed because they then will sell it, and you can't grow gardens on concrete, folks. That's why everybody returned back from Detroit. You don't know your history, you better start looking at it because age has its privileges. Everybody went to Detroit to make big money, and then when the economy crashed, they all came back home. You know why? We had land, and we could grow food, and we could keep from starving to death. You can do that in the city, you can do that in the county, if the government doesn't tax you so much that you have to sell it because you can't pay the taxes as you approach the maturity of retirement age. They didn't listen on that board. I don't know if you all will listen or not because, see, I can only talk at you, we can't discuss it. And that's the problem. Have a good day.
The next person who signed up is Matt Barker.
Commissioners, thank you. This is not the first time I've stood before you, it won't be the last. I'm here on behalf of Swanon Owens for Respectful Development to talk about the Dollar General in Swanon Noah once again and just to keep the issue in front of you so that we keep telling our story, how an out-of-state developer and an out-of-state corporation came to our community, took advantage of the rules, and have produced an unsafe driveway on Roland Road in Swanon Noah. We believe that the North Carolina Department of Transportation Engineers have become compromised in being able to oversee this project because they have admitted they made a mistake in approving the original dangerous driveway plan. Based on that mistake, Dollar General got permits from the county and began building. And once the mistake was discovered and admitted, then Dollar General had our regulatory agencies over a barrel because if they actually require of them what they should have required from the beginning, Dollar General will sue them for the money they've poured into the site as a result of their original errors. However, the cost of this is the safety of our neighbors in Swanon Noah, including families and schoolchildren from Artspace Charter School who use that road every day, twice a day, for drop-off and pickup. So the Dollar General and their developer, the Broadway Group, had the opportunity to know in advance, before they ever purchased this property, that a dangerous driveway location was going to be necessary to configure their store the way they want it. But they went ahead anyway, and somehow, some way, NCDOT and Buncombe County Planning, both of whom should have recognized the dangerousness of this driveway, approved their plans. Now we're in a very expensive situation for Dollar General and the Broadway Group, but it is entirely of their own making. But if the regulatory agencies involved do not hold them accountable and require of them the desirable safety configuration for their driveway, then the whole consequence of these mistakes and these cynical choices by this developer will land on the people of our community instead of being put where they belong, on the responsible parties who made these choices to begin with. So we're asking you, Commissioners, to stand with us. We will email you the details of the history of this situation. We're going to ask you to stand with us, to support us in calling on North Carolina Department of Transportation to investigate and correct the situation. Make sure that the consequences of these choices land on the parties who are responsible and not on your neighbors and Buncombe County citizens. Thank you.
The next person who signed up is Sharon Kneep. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your last name, sorry about that.
Commissioners, my name is Sharon Kneip. I am a neighbor on the Ferry Road, North Hill area. I am here to speak to you requesting that you consider lowest-density construction on that road. Several of you I have seen have come up Ferry Road, and you know that it is a very dangerous, curvy road. Heavy traffic is just going to make it that much worse. One question, and I understand that you're not allowed to respond to me, is do you know how many units we have in that area? If you look at that I just gave you down at the bottom, that's our area. That is from Ingles on Long Shoals Road and from Ingles on Long Shoals Road to Ingles on Sand Hill Road. That's 10 miles. At this time, there are 4,218 units in that area. In 2017, there were 2174, and in 2019, they were 2310. That's from the Bowen Report. Now, there are 4218, that does include four, one that was approved December 31st and is just now starting to break ground, and three that are in construction. But that does include those numbers. And when I was driving around, I think I actually missed one or two. And it also doesn't include the new project that's been proposed for the left side of Ingles on Sand Hill Road. That's supposed to be kind of a Biltmore Park-like project if it goes through, and these numbers do not include that. They also don't include the traffic from Ward Warner, which is about 600 employees because the Fletcher plant just closed, and everybody is now there on the Brevard Road plant. Two people I spoke to went ahead and took retirement instead of moving over there. They said it wasn't worth it to spend an hour, hour and 15 minutes trying to get home. There are times that it takes me from Fletcher over an hour to pick up my grandchildren, get back to my house. If I, 26, has an accident on it, we're the corridor that catches it. And it's massive. I know that you're going to do something with that property, and I understand that. I don't have a problem with that. But if it's, you know, single-family homes or townhomes that would serve Ward Warner, which they're going to have 600-plus employees, and that would be great for them because they wouldn't be fighting the traffic trying to get anywhere other direction. I never did find a traffic study. Tim did a great job, but I never did find a traffic study. And I've gone through all the stuff that you guys have been sending out, and I did not see one. So I am concerned about that. It's one of the reasons that we're requesting the low-density. And that's me.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate you taking time to--
I'm sorry.
I said, I appreciate you coming and taking time to speak to the Board. The next speaker is Philip Cooper.
Good evening. I got three minutes, so I'm going to get it in in three minutes, I promise. So this morning, it was brought to my attention that it was an article. And as a man in long-term recovery and also a person who has served prison time and jail time, I was excited. I repeat, as a person in long-term recovery, I was excited to see the article. As I read through the article, I noticed something that concerns me and has always concerned me, and that's when I see jail and prison put together for reentry services. It's not the same. It's really like night and day. People who do prison time, they have different needs. And if you're not familiar with the difference between prison and jail reentry, it's not hard to find me. I will make myself available to break it down for you. I've been deemed the reentry expert even on a national level with Just Leadership USA. So I'm here, and I'm here for the ride. As far as substance use disorder, I do want to repeat that I am a person in long-term recovery. So my heart goes out to my brothers and sisters who are battling opioid addiction. I say that repeatedly because I need you to understand that before I make this statement. The opioid use programs, what I've seen over the days, some of them have hired people that came through my workforce development programs. One that I led at AB Tech Community College, which was called Upscale Western North Carolina, in which we sponsored some peer support specialists who went on to work for some of these programs. So I'm very familiar with the demographics of what these programs are serving, and they're not serving many black people. I ran a report online, it's public-facing, on DPS, and between February 1, 2021, and February 28, 2022, there were 310 people with Buncombe County as their county of conviction or county of residence. That means that 310, at least 310 of those people came back to Buncombe County. Out of those, 89 of those were black people, 89. And out of that 89, 86 of them were black men, 86 of them. The question that I would pose and want to ask anybody who is looking to provide reentry services is how many black men are you serving? That's the question that I pose. I started out doing this work when I was at AB Tech. Like I said, in 2017, I created a reentry program inside a community college. And it was so unique that it got the attention of the Appalachian Regional Commission, who pays my paycheck right now. The program that I'm leading at Landis Sky right now, it is very focused on addiction. We're not serving that many black people. And it breaks my heart because I'm from here, and I get a call to action when I go to the grocery store, when I go to church, when I go to recovery meetings. People need help. And so I'm here today to let you know that I'm no longer creating programs inside of organizations that are focusing on different work and now have Operation Gateway. And our mission is providing reentry services, right? Our mission is decreasing recidivism by addressing the social determinants of health of returning citizens. And it's more to it than substance use. You have connections to families, you have assistance to get IDs. I'm one of the people that fought for us to be able to have a process in place to get IDs, continuity of care, whether it's medical or substance use disorder or mental health. So if you want to learn more about what the difference between prison and jail is, it's not hard to find.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cooper. Appreciate you being here. The next person that signed up is Elizabeth Williams.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Williams. I'm the Executive Director of Mountain Care, and I live in Weaverville. I appreciate your service to the community and all your efforts to support all 260,000 of us. It's appreciated. I'm here today to talk about a particular segment of the community, older adults. That is who Mountain Care serves. For more than 30 years, Mountain Care has provided Adult Day services to the residents of Buncombe County. We started in a church basement, then we moved to Doctor's Park, then we became a founding member of Care Partners, then we became part of the Mission Health System. And then when the Mission Health System was purchased by HCA, Adult Day Services were pulled out. So we are now a standalone, small, nonprofit agency. And we do not have the support or the infrastructure anymore of Care Partners or Mission Health. And I'm here to tell you that Mountain Care's future is uncertain. We have two years left on our lease to HCA. I have two years of funding to cover that lease of $350,000. I don't know if HCA is going to renew the lease. I don't know if I'm going to have funding to pay for the lease after two years without drastically increasing the rates. And the reason why this is important is because we are the only provider of Adult Day in Buncombe County. So the pandemic tightened financial, small financial margins that were already in place with increased labor, increased expenses. Daysday, which has an Adult Day program, is closing right now. They're closing at the end of this month. Irene Wertham had to close for many months. We had to close the only Adult Day program in Transylvania County at the beginning of this year. Aging services have been weakened during the pandemic at a time when really the opposite should be true. I know you all know the numbers around aging service, around older adults. I know you know what's coming. Are we ready? Are we doing everything that we can now in order to build capacity? The Active Aging Center Committee has been working hard for three years to create an innovative model that is ready for the future, that can be proactive, collaborative, and responsive to the needs of aging adults. One that creates better navigation and access, one strives to improve utilization and financial resources, one that could incorporate impact strategies to accomplish common goals among providers. I'm asking you to act now to help us build a strong hub for aging services, help us support older adults to age in place, ensure that Adult Day has a sustainable future in Buncombe County. Please consider supporting the Active Aging Center project. Please reach out if you would like more information. Give aging service providers the resources that we need to take care of older adults. Thank you.
Next is Tiffany Goss.
Hello. My name is Tiffany Goss, and I am the Program Manager for Mountain Care. I'm honored to be here today to tell you a bit about Adult Day services. I appreciate your time and consideration into learning more about the service that our community is in desperate need of. As I speak with you today, I would like you to think warmly of a member of the aging community that has positively impacted your life's trajectory. I ask that you hold that person in mind. For me, that person is Theron Coral Merrill, my Papa, my hero, and the man who raised me and the reason I chose to pursue a career serving aging adults. Theron led by example. He was a man of integrity. He had a soft and gentle voice that was strong and compassionate. He had a heart called to serve his community. He was patient. He observed others keenly and looked to make their days brighter. I honor his memory today by leading in his example. Had he not been able to age in place, I know I would not be the person I am today. I am only one of hundreds of lives that were impacted over the years. I am a ripple. My children will be ripples. Because when, as a community, we take care of one another, our lives continue to be enriched for generations to come. There is a ripple that occurs. Aging in place allows the essence of an individual to continue to make impacts and ripples within their family and community while also caring for them with the compassion, dignity, and respect they deserve, that each human life deserves. What we do far transcends the four walls of Adult Day services. We are community-based care that takes holistic approach. We feed each body differently. We are person-centered, focusing on enrichment, connection, socialization, and building upon each individual's skills, passions, and lived experiences. We are guiding each other through the next chapter of life. We are a bridge, helping support and bolster members of our community so that they can continue to age in place, so that their loved ones can continue to work and show up for the various other roles they have in life, as parents, as children, as skilled workers, continuing to be able to be involved in their communities. We are a lifeline, often delaying and sometimes preventing the need for institutionalization. We provide a safe place for you to come, not only for the participants, but also the caregivers who are often on their last thread of hope. We ensure that you do not have to be alone in the difficult decisions that are going to come. We see you, we are here for you in your greatest time of need. We are also accessible. From an economic standpoint, Adult Day is a win-win for society. Funding Adult Day services decreases Medicaid costs, lowers the rate of full-time institutional care while still offering consistent health monitoring. Among other benefits, it reduces remission and emergency room visits. Since Mountain Care became Mountain Care, we have served 703 unique individuals. We are here, we are skilled, and we are able to support our community, but we cannot do it without your support. It takes a village to care for our elders, just as it does our children. So you might be wondering what you can do to help. First off, come take a tour. Come witness firsthand what Adult Day is. Finally, consider supporting the financial future of Mountain Care and the Active Aging Center.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you taking time to come. The next person that signed up is Barbara St. Hiller.
Thank you. I'm Barbara St. Hiller, and I'm here to express my support for adult services in Buncombe County. For 30 years, until I retired this past October, I worked at the Charles George VA, where my job was coordinating services for older adults, such as Adult Day, home care, and home health, all of this to support aging in place for our veterans who are frail. In my opinion, Adult Day provides the biggest bang for the buck in terms of supporting older adults who are dealing with cognitive decline. One veteran comes to mind, and his story exemplifies the need for Adult Day and what it can do for individuals, families, and for our community. Mr. K was a World War II veteran who lived in the Vanderbilt Apartments. He was in his late 80s, physically strong, but growing increasingly confused due to dementia. He would forget to take his medications or to eat, even if his daughter set things out. He wandered downtown Asheville, haunting various shops and restaurants, sometimes in his underwear. His daughter desperately wanted to keep him out of an institution, but she could not bring him home to live with her, in part because he would not agree. He was not necessarily an easy man to deal with. When I met them, I informed the daughter about Mountain Care, but I said it had only a 50% chance of working. His safety was so compromised that I believed he would soon end up in an assisted-living facility. However, it worked. He attended Mountain Care five days a week, where he received breakfast and lunch, and they made sure he took his daily medications. They provided a shower twice a week. Mountain Mobility picked him up in the mornings and brought him home in the afternoons. Most importantly, this curmudgeonly man thrived with the attention, activities, and sense of community Mountain Care offered. He excelled at trivia, which tapped into his long-term memories. He danced the foxtrot in the waltz. He planted carrots in the community garden. He attended Mountain Care for several years before he died, requiring institutionalization for only the last few months of his life. His last years were not ones of loneliness, depression, and decay, even though he continued to decline. Adult Day services are expensive in one respect, but so much less expensive than institutional care. It should exist for everyone who needs it, and who knows who among us will need it? If we're fortunate, each of us will live into old age. But the sad truth is that many of us will struggle with physical or cognitive debility, and we're going to want to stay in our homes. I retired in part because my spouse has been diagnosed with Alzheimer's. She is going to need Adult Day services at some point. I want Mountain Care to be there for her and for me. One way to ensure Adult Day is available is to support the Active Aging Center. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the last person that signed up to speak is Malork Robb. Again, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Good afternoon, I'm Melinda Robb. My husband attended Mountain Care Adult Day for nearly eight years. And so I'm here today to provide an example of the impact of those Adult Day services on him and on our family. He had been, my husband Tom, had been diagnosed with Parkinson's disease and Lewy Body dementia at age 58. And after about six years, there was such decline that it became evident that it just wasn't safe for him to be at home. I was still working. And I was aware that by his participating in Adult Day services, it would allow me to continue my work in early childhood research, to manage our household, and to support our family. And by his being at Mountain Care, I knew that he would be safe and well-cared-for. But pretty quickly, after he began attending there, it really was evident to me that the benefits were so much more than just a support to me. The Adult Day services really became a vital part of his community, a community that he loved, that provided him-- a community that he loved, that provided him opportunities for social connections outside of our home, and for participating in activities however he was able. The staff always fostered his independence however it was possible. And he, they provided him a sense of purpose and a sense of dignity. And all, all of that happened, all of that was true, all through, even as his physical and cognitive abilities steadily and drastically declined. They helped to preserve, they helped to preserve his quality of life and our family's quality of life in a way that I just couldn't have done by myself. And that kind of support made it possible for him to, to stay, to live at home for as long as his disease progressed. And we all learned the important life lesson that, that a person, anyone can, any, anyone can, no matter how much the loss of his capabilities, can be a valued and happy member of a community. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Those are all the folks that signed up to speak. Is there anyone else with us this evening that would like to address the board during public comment? All right. Well, thank you all who took time to come speak to the board this evening. We really appreciate hearing from you, and thank you very much. All right. The next item on our agenda, we've got a couple of different presentations. The first is a proclamation recognizing National Public Health Week. And Commissioner Amanda Edwards is going to present this proclamation. She represents us on the county health board, and we appreciate that. And Stacy Saunders, our Public Health Director, is here. Actually, we've got other folks here too. So our Stacy, I guess, is not, is not here. Sorry, sorry about that. But Stony's here. Thank you for being here.
County of Buncombe Proclamation for Public Health Week. Whereas the Buncombe County health workforce is a critical component of our emergency response to natural and man-made disasters and widespread disease outbreaks in our county, including COVID-19. And whereas our county and state public health workers have been courageous, committed, inventive, nimble, and tireless in their work to protect our residents from the threat of the COVID-19 pandemic while continuing to perform the other essential public health functions, oftentimes at the risk of their own safety and health. And whereas, public health measures to control and eliminate infectious diseases, improve environmental sanitation, and promote healthy lifestyle practices have improved the health status and increased life expectancy for the residents of our county and all state. And whereas, public health plays a critical role in advancing health equity and providing opportunities for health, resulting in improved productivity and decreased healthcare costs for all North Carolinians. And whereas, the Buncombe County leaders are committed to a continued emphasis on protection of health and prevention of health threats, and to helping our county and all North Carolina reach a better state of health through programming and outreach. And whereas, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners encourages all residents to recognize that public health is working to ensure that all residents are protected from threats such as COVID-19, influenza, foodborne disease, injury, and chronic diseases such as diabetes, heart disease, and asthma. Now therefore be it resolved, on this fifth day of April 2022, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim that April 4th through April 10th, 2022, shall be designated as Public Health Week in Buncombe County, and commend its observance to all county residents as we convey our deepest gratitude to those public health professionals who serve our county every day. Signed, Brownie Newman, Chairman, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. Stony, it's a privilege to read this and deliver it to you, serving on the DHHS board. To everyone here, I can attest what an incredible team that you and Stacy have that have been committed not only to being on the front lines of the COVID-19 pandemic, but continuing the daily work of working to ensure the health and well-being of our most vulnerable members of our community. So thank you so much for your work.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards and members of the board for recognizing Public Health Week. It probably would be an understatement to say that the last two years have been some of the most challenging years that any of us have seen and may likely see in our lifetime. And when public health is working well, one of the advantages of it for others is you really don't see it. So a lot of what we do in public health is behind the scenes. So when you buy that beautiful house in the country, you may not know that someone from public health at some point was there to make sure that your septic water would not leak into your well and cause your family to be sick. The same can be said of our wonderful restaurants. That someone's been there to make sure that those restaurants owners understand food safety and that you can have a good experience. The same could be said of communicable disease. Some of our work with families and vulnerable citizens, environmental concerns. But COVID put public health in the front. And one thing I saw, and I knew it in my heart, is that the key word in public health is public. We all know people that are self-focused, maybe self-centered. What I would say for public health professionals, they're just the opposite. They're very others-focused and very selfless. And so thank you for recognizing our workforce and the important work that we do. And I would be remiss not to say, while all of our staff are amazing, it really was somewhat of a godsend that Stacy Saunders came to Buncombe County six months into a national pandemic and did not even get a chance to acclimate herself to the building before she took absolute leadership. And she has led us with integrity, intelligence, compassion, and incredible devotion over the 20 months that she's been here. So I would be remiss not to recognize her publicly. I'm sorry she couldn't be here tonight, but I did just want to be able to give her a public shout out. So thank you so much for this honor.
All right. Thank you, Stony. Appreciate you. All right. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing child abuse prevention. And Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Ferrara will present the proclamation.
The County of Buncombe Proclamation and Recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets. Whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community. Whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting, and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, ensure all children grow to their full potential. Whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Whereas it is vital that we join forces with the Child Protection Team of Buncombe County and Mountain Child Advocacy Center Incorporated to reach out to parents and children to prevent child physical abuse, sexual abuse, and neglect, and to strengthen families and children who have experienced abuse. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows. That the month of April 2022 be proclaimed Child Abuse Prevention Month in Buncombe County. That this board does hereby call upon every citizen to join the child protection organizations, groups, and individuals in observance of the month with appropriate programs and activities. That this proclamation be effective upon its adoption, adopted this fifth day of April 2022 by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe. And I will present this to you, Stony, on behalf, I know, of a large and incredible team of folks who literally are on call 24/7 to help make sure that children in our community are safe and cared for. So thank you to all of you, and thank you to you for your leadership.
Once again, thank you, and I very humbly accept this award on behalf of Rebecca Smith and our entire Social Work Division. A very popular saying that's been around for quite a few years now is that happy childhoods last a lifetime. And we all love that saying. I think we can all resonate with it at some point. But after 31 years in public human services, I'd also like to say that traumatic childhoods also last a lifetime. And it hurts my heart and should every member of our community that every day we're serving at least 600 children in Buncombe County who've experienced abuse or neglect at the hands of a caretaker or a parent or a loved one. And before we, anyone goes there to think, how could someone do this? In those 31 years, I've only met a couple of people that I felt truly wanted to harm a child. So we also say that success begets success. But I would also say that trauma begets trauma. And many of the parents that we work with also are suffering childhood trauma. And we're seeing a repeat of that. So I want to thank this board because we do have programs and initiatives in Buncombe County, more than any place I've ever worked, where we're trying to get upstream and get to parents early and get to children early. We have great partners in our school system with Mahac, with Mountain Child Advocacy Center, with ABCCM. And so, and even with, in child development. I mean, we're leading the way in services that really impact families early. And we can turn this tide. We can take this 600 down to 300, and maybe someday down to almost nothing. And so I want to thank you for recognizing the good work that's going on and for supporting the work that Buncombe has been allowed to lead. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right. And we also have a Food Waste Reduction Month proclamation. And Commissioner Parker Sloan will present this. And I believe Casey Lohmeyer from Solid Waste is here as well. Thank you for being here.
Okay. County of Buncombe Proclamation. April is Food Waste Reduction Month. It's also Earth Month, and while we're at it, it's home of Earth Day on April 22nd as well. Whereas North Carolina residents annually generate significant amounts of food waste that could be reduced to improve environmental health and food access through strategic prevention, rescue, and recycling actions. 247 pounds per person in North Carolina as compared to 219 pounds per person nationally. And whereas, there is an opportunity to redirect edible food to nourish our state's residents who have inadequate access to food from 30% to 40% of the national food supply that is wasted, 55% of which is estimated to be sent to landfills annually. And whereas, it is estimated that 57,500 tons of food waste are generated in Buncombe County each year. And whereas, according to the most recent records, there were more than 34,770 food insecure individuals, including 7,520 children in Buncombe County alone. And whereas, April is Earth Month, and food waste reduction relates to conservation activities and helps reduce carbon dioxide emissions, with food waste itself comprising nearly a quarter of municipal solid waste landfill. And whereas, North Carolina ranked ninth in the nation for food insecurity, 19th for seniors, and 11th for children. Particularly among minority and low-income populations, food recovery services can reduce food waste and improve food security for all ages throughout the state. And whereas, the United States spends $408 billion, or approximately 2% of our national gross domestic product, to grow, process, and dispose of food that is never eaten. Reduced, reducing food waste can reduce economic loss as well. And whereas, reducing food waste will help preserve our natural resources as food waste uses 21% of the country's fresh water, 19% of our fertilizer, 18% of our cropland, and 24% of our landfill volume. And whereas, activities to reduce food waste can provide economic opportunities for entrepreneurs and farmers to sell otherwise unsellable products, and for the private composting industry to grow. And whereas, reducing food waste will reduce greenhouse gas emissions and support North Carolina's goal to reduce emissions by 40% by 2025 as directed by Executive Order Number 80, North Carolina's commitment to address climate change and transition to a clean energy economy. And whereas, Buncombe County has adopted a target goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions as outlined in the Environmental and Energy Stewardship Focus Area of the Buncombe County Strategic Plan 2025, and also as demonstrated by the board's resolution to reduce carbon emissions by 2% annually. Now therefore be it resolved that in this, the fifth day of April 2022, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize April 20, April 2022 as Food Waste Reduction Month, highlighting these resolutions and moving the county forward to engage in food waste prevention and recovery efforts, develop and share food waste prevention and recover, recovery best practices, and ground the community in the traditions of food saving and composting. Signed, Brownie Newman, Chairman of the Buncombe County Court of Commissioners.
Thank you to Commissioner Sloan and the rest of the board for reaffirming the county's commitment to food waste reduction. We are really excited to continue implementing creative and innovative initiatives that address this important issue. Thanks again.
Thank you, Casey. Thanks for being here. All right. Commissioners, next up. We do not have any public hearings. Ms. Pender, any items under the county manager's report?
Just two quick reminders, sir. One, our last public, scheduled public input meeting for our comprehensive plan is scheduled tomorrow, April the 6th, at 2:00 PM at the Black Mountain Library. The survey will still be open, so people can still go online and do the survey. But our last public meeting is tomorrow. So if you haven't gotten a chance to get out, we're encouraging folks to get out and share at the Black Mountain Library tomorrow at 2:00. The second reminder to their community is that there are a application. The deadline for submittal is April 12th. So if you're planning on putting a submission in for ARPA fund, then please do so before noon on April the 12th. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. No items under old business. Under new business, the first item is a, is consideration of a resolution approving the financing of improvements to the Asheville Regional Airport with the proceeds of tax-exempt bonds to be issued by the Greater Asheville Regional Airport Authority. Michael Frue will help us get started on this item.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the Greater Asheville Regional Airport Authority's planning some expansion projects. And we've got Lou Blowice here to explain what that expansion is. And just to lay the groundwork, this authority has authorized to issue revenue bonds and had its own public hearing in, on St. Patrick's Day. And what the request is of this board pursuant to IRS regulations is to get the approval, the stamp of approval of the local governing agency for the issuance of this debt. It's not an obligation of the county at all. And here's Mr. Blowice.
Thank you, Mr. Frue. Mr. Chairman, members of the board of the county commission. We're here today again to ask for the approval of the non, the tax-exempt bond issuance for the airport authority. As Mr. Frue stated, there's no obligation from any of the county taxpayers or from the county commissioner to pay those bonds. These are airport revenue bonds that will be supporting the new terminal building, which I have presented to you in previous presentations. Basically, it goes into, as you are well aware, we have 115,000 square foot terminal building. We're doubling, more than doubling that to 275,000 square feet. We're going from seven gates with five loading bridges to 12 gates and 12 loading bridges. Full second-story boarding process, new concessions. And part of the process is also to build the new Federal Aviation Administration Control Tower. That in and of itself is roughly $45 million. The terminal building is roughly $230, $230 million. So these bonds will be going towards that project and funding it along the way over the next three years. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for that update. Do you have updates to share about sort of what growth might look like in terms of additional carriers or flight options or what you expect to see on that front?
We continually advocate for new airlines and new flights, destinations. This is just a terminal building that is 61 years, 62 years old now. And it has had three or four major renovations. When we started this project back in 2018, we anticipated to do an expansion of the existing terminal. When our consultants came back and looked at our passenger loads, they basically said, "Expansion is not an option. You have to rebuild." expansion is not an option, you have to rebuild. We are hitting, and we, and back in 2019, we surpassed our 2038 passenger estimates, so we continue to grow. Just as a reference, obviously through COVID, all the aviation has been hit hard in the sector. Our passenger numbers for 2021 basically ended up about 89% of where we were in 2019, which was our high watermark. So this will just continue to give us the elbow room to expand and accommodate the passengers that continue to use the airport.
All right. Commissioners, if there's no other questions, is there a motion regarding execution of the resolution authorizing financing of improvements to the Asheville Regional Airport with proceeds of tax-exempt bonds to be issued by the Greater Asheville Regional Airport Authority?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Lou, thanks for being here. Good luck on the project. Move it ahead. All right. Awesome. All right. Next item is consideration of a budget amendment for grant award on jail and prison reentry grant 2022.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to come before you with some good news about a re-award of a grant for jail and prison reentry through a partnership with Dogwood Trust. Just an overview, I'll go over kind of the purpose, the background, how we are delivering the services, the work we've done for the past year, the grant award, and the request for board action. So this grant that we are receiving is a renewal grant for another year. And the purpose of this grant was twofold, to improve public health outcomes for those justice involved, and to reduce pretrial population by working with community or individuals reentering to provide linkage to care and stabilization supports. And hopefully, there was like a secondary aim. We were trying to also look at how we can reduce overdose deaths and connect people who's been incarcerated that have chronic mental and physical illnesses. So some background, we applied for the grant in 2020, and we noticed a large percent of folks coming in our jails were needing alcohol withdrawal protocols, so they were significantly using enough that if they would stop drinking alcohol, they could go into serious physical crisis. And we also noticed that there were a large percent coming in needing opioid withdrawal as well. In addition to that, there were folks coming in with chronic care conditions, asthma, seizure disorders, hepatitis, and diabetes. So we proposed this model where we would work collaboratively, so our department, Justice Services, and Public Health, and utilize the current services that we were working with them and kind of bolster the work and the supports. So in our public health side, we were continuing to work with our partner Sunrise, and they were peer supports that were working on those reentering any facility in Buncombe County, including correction facility in Swanonore, and our detention facility, to really work with people coming out that had chronic medical conditions and opioid use disorder, connecting them to their primary care provider, making sure that they were following up with those resources and supports. And then on our team, the Justice Services team, we wanted to expand the jail reentry team. We had folks inside our jail case manager screening and making plans for folks when they were released, but no one was there to follow up and help support folks when they were out. So we proposed this grant to add a nurse, a case manager, and a peer support to work with folks once they're released in the community. This past year, in our community linkage to care, about 117 were referred, and we had about 97 that were served and connected with the peer support. On our community reentry team, we had about 428 people referred and 181 folks that were served. And our services are voluntary, so if you meet criteria, people will refer, but they had to be willing and wanting to engage. As far as program outcomes, we saw roughly about 60 or 70% following up with specialty care appointments, about 70 to 75% following up their behavioral treatment. In the post-six months, we saw about 75% maintain housing. In our program for community reentry, about 71% did not experience rearrest, and they reported, about 80% reported decreased use of substance use. So this award will extend the current program from March 2022 to March 2023, roughly $445,000. We will continue to contract with our current providers, and the funding is divided based on the position and personnel needed. And then there is no county obligation to fund this at the end of the grant award. So we're requesting the board to accept the Dogwood Trust grant and approve the budget amendment. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks, Tiffany. Commissioners, any questions? Is there a motion?
Thank you.
Motion to approve the budget amendment grant award for jail and prison reentry grant 2022.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item is consideration of a budget amendment for cybersecurity contract.
Hello, Commissioners. Nice to see you again. Thank you for having us today. Also here with Mark Goodwin, who I'll introduce here in a minute. He's our Chief Information Security Officer. Bottom line upfront. Our slide deck's kind of going all over the place. There we go. Bottom line upfront. So we are looking today for a request for board action on a budget amendment to fund some IT security improvements, essentially. I'll let Mark talk a little bit about those specifically. We did put this in our budget request for next year. Avril's been very supportive of cybersecurity. I know several of y'all have reached out to us over the last somewhat months asking about cybersecurity issues. So we thought it'd be a good idea today to talk a little bit about our cybersecurity program. I'm going to give you a little history of it, introduce Mark. He'll talk about the threat landscape and our philosophy around cybersecurity in general. So where we're at, in FY '19, we took existing positions. We took existing positions within the IT department, and a lot of this was about best practice segregation of duties, and we created a dedicated IT security division. I like to say everyone's job in the county, or even the IT department, of course, is security, but these folk are definitely, it's their primary focus. We used no new positions for this, and we also created our Chief Information Security Officer role. And so leadership position to IT, setting policies, processes, procedures, and Mark will talk a little bit more about his role here. Over the last somewhat years, we've had several investments. I won't read all this list, but you'll see things like next-gen antivirus software. This is, you know, artificial intelligence threat detection, not just blocking your computer from installing malicious software, but looking for suspicious behavior that are happening. We've done a lot of these third-party and HIPAA audits, and had the National Guard assessment come in a couple of times. We love that, and these are experts in the field that can tell us what we're doing good and tell us what we need to improve upon, and we can take corrective action on that. Again, a lot of investments and accomplishments over the last few years. What we're going to talk about today, though, really does increase our cybersecurity posture, and I'll let Mark talk about why. And with that, I do want to introduce Mark. He has a great background, and he comes in with a lot of energy, a lot of knowledge, and I'll let him talk about it. So, thanks.
Hello. I haven't met many of you yet, but I'm very happy to be here, and I want to thank you for having me up here to introduce myself and tell you a little bit about what we do and how we do it. Sorry. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about what we're doing and how we're doing it, mainly, and part of it is why. The threat landscape is what's around us, who's coming at us. It's the internal threats, the external threats, the global, the local, and in some cases, the insider threats. And so we have to understand the entire environment around us as we react to it. A big part of what we do is learn from experience, learn from other events that have happened. Baltimore that happened a few years ago, where they were compromised pretty heavily. And we can apply that to ourselves and protect ourselves a little bit better. What drives us and drives the need for security? The foundation is a public trust, making sure that we're handling public data safely and securely. There's also a regulatory element of that, which is housed in the law through HIPAA, through CGIS, and through other public law that's been established. And then a little bit about the typical day of Buncombe County with me and my team. We react to alerts, we make ourselves better, and we make the larger programs that we work within better through our activities. I did want to share my team because they are my strength. I have five people on my team, six with myself in there. We operate across three main areas. We work within security management, security operations, and the technology to actually improve the posture of ourselves. The organization, like I said, is management. I'm mostly heading up the security management pieces, which is the policy and procedures. I work with Monica Stewart on my team to do the risk assessment and risk assurance piece, and that's understanding where we are weakest and where we need to improve. The operational piece are the daily alerts that we get, the response to those, the active attacks that happen every day. And that's Mark Remine, and we all participate in that as the activity increases. As we move into making ourselves better, David Anderson has been helping us incredibly with training and outreach within the employee community. Kevin McCall helps us on the network side of things to make sure that our network is viable and secure. Our host security, which are all the computers and all the servers in our environment, Adam Scarborough helps us with that. And then David also helps us with the Microsoft side of things, since they're such a major player in our internal environment. So my management philosophy, I've been managing for a lot of years, and the best way I can do things is helping my team to succeed, to be their servant, to encourage them, to facilitate their work. On top of that, I've, my mentors over the years have helped me understand the Four Agreements, and those are the book and all sorts of things that talk to it. But it's a way of dealing with people in complex environments and stressful situations, and it's a really good way to live. As for security, there's a concept called defense in depth, and that is what's typically called a multi-layer approach, where you don't have one thing protecting everything. It's many layers of an onion, and those layers help protect whatever it is we're doing. Regulatory compliance is a major axis of this, making sure that we're adhering to the statutes that are in place. My own level of paranoia, knowing that everything is happening all at once, all the time. So the requests that we have in front of you, it kind of feeds that a little bit in that we're going after some 24-by-7 support around this. And then the appropriateness of response, the communication and the automation of this is largely focused on the, not just inside IT, and not just inside the security team, but the county employee base as a whole. It's been mentioned here that everybody, it's kind of everybody's job, but the reality is we have to be able to communicate and interact effectively with people when things go bad. So the specific request is two pieces. One is working with a managed service provider that will lend us two things, additional people capability, they will provide us staffing with capabilities we don't have on the team currently, and that are very expensive to maintain, train, coach, and encourage, and also coverage in a 365-day-a-year mode. So not just daylight hour, daylight business hours, but all year round. So they'll help us with that. That's more of a reactive approach, where we're seeing alerts and they're helping us digest them. Whereas the proactive, which what's something called is dark web monitoring, it is where pieces of the internet that are not normally accessible are monitored for compromised usernames, passwords, and other information that might impact us. We're then able to use that information to expire accounts or remove, change credentials and prevent things from happening. That's pretty much it for me. I did want to be available if you had any questions now or at a future date. I'm here for you, and I can help you with anything.
All right. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So as Eric said earlier, they had, the IT had made this a FY '23 request. We thought it was important enough to pull it forward to this year. So we are going to, based on our increased sales tax receipts, we're above what we've budgeted for revenue, we are going to realize some of that revenue in order to increase the sales tax budget by $225,197 to accommodate this expenditure.
Thank you for the presentations, everyone. Commissioners, any questions about the proposal? Is there a motion regarding the proposal and associated budget amendment? All right. There's a motion in second to support the recommended proposal and associated budget amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all. Appreciate it. All right. Commissioners, we have a couple of, actually just one board appointment to make. On the planning board, there are two positions for reappointment. I'll make a motion to reappoint Ken Khan and Cindy Weeks.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Joyner, any other board items we should be aware of? Commissioners, and a couple of announcements. On April 19th at 3:00 PM, the Commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On April 19th at 5:00 PM, the Commissioners will hold their regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. I don't believe there's a need for any closed session this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
A move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.